Twenty seventh, two thousand and fifteen. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Bauer?
Here.
Gillen is absent. Malika?
Here.
Dawkins?
Here.
And Miller?
Here. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
So move.
Second.
We have motion by Dawkins, second by Malika, to approve the minutes. Any changes, corrections? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carried. Next one is the approval of minutes of January twentieth, two thousand and fifteen.
The move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Bauer, second by Malika. Any changes, corrections? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carried. Next, we need the approval of the agenda for today.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Dawkins, second by Malika, to approve the agenda as written. Any changes or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion pass. Now we need to go into community health.
Motion to move into community health board.
Thank you.
We have motion by Malika, second by Bauer, to go move into community health board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Devin, come on up.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay, one thing on the item for community health board. We have an agreement between the Minnesota Department of Health and Rice County Community Health Services for maternal-child health grant duties and funding. This project agreement would run through December thirty first of two thousand and sixteen. The funding amount is fifty-nine thousand, three twenty-one for two thousand, or two thousand and fifteen, and fifty-nine thousand, three twenty-one for two thousand and sixteen. We've had similar grant agreements in past years. The funding is up a bit from two thousand and fourteen, and this funding helps us provide services targeted to high-risk, low-income women and children at risk for chronic illness, pregnancy complication, and to help prevent child abuse and neglect. So I would request a motion to approve the maternal-child health agreement between MTH and Rice County Community Health Services.
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Dawkins, second by Malika, to approve the Title V maternal-child health block grant. Any questions? No questions? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor approving this, this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to move out of community health.
Second.
We have a motion to move out of community health by Bauer, second by Malika. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to into regular public health.
Okay. Four things on the agenda for public health. The first item would be a request for contract renewal with Jenna Peterson. We've had an agreement with this provider since July of two thousand and ten to provide financial and accounting services for the public health department. The current rate is thirty-five seventy an hour, and I am proposing a two-year renewal of the contract with a rate increase to thirty-six fifty. In this grant, we cannot exceed greater than thirty hours every two weeks, and we actually average about fifteen to twenty hours per month for those services. So would ask for approval to renew that contract.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Malika, second by Dawkins, to approve this contract renewal with Jenna Peterson. Any questions? Comments? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, next, actually, two items on the agenda relate to public health funding request updates. The first update is regarding a U-Cure grant. There was a grant opportunity made available to public health agencies in November of this year. We submitted an application and were approved for twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to help support public health outreach services and also help support the Tapestry Project that we started last year in collaboration with some other community health partners, targeting new refugee immigrant populations to Rice County. So this grant would support the work of public health staff as well as a collaborating partner with us, growing up healthy. So no action is requested, but just informational purposes about that grant. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about that.
Any questions? Apparently not.
Okay, the next item is just an update on MRC, Minnesota Response Core Capacity Building, award application that we submitted to NACHO, which is the National Association of County and City Health Officials, to support and help build capacity within our local MRC. And we did recently receive notification that we were approved for the award of three thousand, five hundred dollars, and that will support coordination and training for our Rice County MRC unit. So again, just for informational purposes related to that grant. And I don't know if anyone has questions about that.
Any questions?
Okay. Last item then on the agenda is a funding opportunity to help support Rice County family home visiting. Rice County Social Services actually received notification and a letter from health partners of ten thousand dollars in funding being offered to Rice County Public Health to support family home visiting services. The letter indicates that the monies would support training or costs associated with sustaining evidence-based home visiting programs which support young families with parenting needs. So I am bringing that forward and asking for approval from the board to accept the health partners' funding to support family home visiting programs in Rice County Public Health.
Move to approve. Accept health partners' funding.
Second. We have a motion by Bauer, second by Dawkins. Questions? Go ahead.
So this is just a one-time, and is it something you'll apply for again? Are they not going to offer it again?
We actually did not apply for this. A letter was given to us, and the letter was attached and in the packet, and it just said that it was funding to help support programs for family home visiting. So it is a bit different that I didn't apply for it.
Right.
But it was offered to support our programming.
Okay.
And we do provide family home visiting to families and children in our county, and there are definitely a cost associated with that related to training costs and support for our staff providing those services.
Go ahead, Devin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, you had a, you may not have had to apply, but you had to reply to get it in some way, or did they just?
Actually, not. The letter came along with the check.
Really? Interesting. That's okay. And appreciate you going after these grants, too, Devin. Takes a lot of work to do the grant work, so.
Yeah. This, in this case, it wasn't a grant application.
But on the other two, the grants.
Okay.
Any other questions? So we have a motion by Bauer, second by Malika, to approve the.
Second by Dawkins.
Second by Dawkins, to approve this gift, if you will, from health partners of ten thousand dollars. All those in favor of accepting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on, Sheriff Saffas. Sheriff Troy Dunn. What do you have for us today?
Good morning, commissioners and staff. I have two items today. First of all, I'm looking for you to adopt Resolution fifteen zero zero six to receive thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollar grant from the Department of Public Safety Office of Justice for our drug task force, our Cannon River Drug and Violent Defender Task Force. So this would be payable for the calendar year two thousand and fifteen, and it's going to be used towards clerical support and equipment for the drug task force.
I'm move to approve Resolution fifteen dash zero zero six.
Second.
We have a motion by Dawkins, second by Bauer. Questions? Go ahead, Gillen.
Is this a federal grant or a state?
State.
State.
Yep. This is the first time that we've received this funding. Most of the, in the past, the state has always only given to task forces that are multi-agency, multi-jurisdictional, and we applied saying we are multi-agency, even though we're in one county, but we're unique in that across the state. But we were, so we, we applied and we were able to get thirty-five thousand, five hundred, which I think helps immensely since we're really starting to wind things up, you know, getting more staff from the different agencies throughout the county versus in the past just having one deputy on there for about two and a half years. So we're, I think we're going to see many good things, but along with, with that comes some additional things, and we have a new program to track all of the drug things that we're doing so we can show people, you know, annually what's going on throughout the county and what we're doing as a task force.
Any other questions? If not, we have a motion by Dawkins and a second by Bauer to approve Resolution fifteen six. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the second thing is just requesting your approval for out-of-state travel for my jail administrator, Carol Holinka. Carol was accepted for the National Institute of Corrections Training in Aurora, California, March twenty-second through twenty-eighth. The Department of Justice, the federal Department of Justice pays for this program. The only thing that we in Rice County have to pay for would be her lunches while she's out there and any miscellaneous travel expenses getting to and from, but they pick her up, they fly her out there, shuttle her to the hotel, and then shuttle her to the training every day. So it's a, it's a good program, similar to the one I attended for the National Sheriff's Institute last year, and I brought a lot back from it, and I think Carol will get a lot out of this, too. And they only usually pick one or two per state, so I think we're fortunate that Carol got in there so soon, and, and she's looking forward to this training.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Bauer, second by Dawkins, to approve the out-of-state travel requests. Any questions? Comments? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thanks. Have a good day.
Next, environmental services. Let me see, Julia here.
Go to administration.
Yeah, we'll go to administration with Tony Murphy.
Commissioners, a consent agenda is presented for your consideration and approval.
I'm move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by, by Dawkins, second by Malika, to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That carries.
And then, as we continue our process of reorganization of the IT department, we have gone through the process of reclassification of the system administrator analyst job description to desktop support technician, grade ten, and we recommend your approval of that change.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Malika, second by Dawkins, to approve the reclassification of a position in IT. Any questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Finally, we have a request from Steel Wasika Cooperative Electric. Doug Hughes is here. We've been requested to provide some expression of support for their partnership, particularly in the area of economic development, and we'll let Doug kind of explain the, the request further.
Morning, commissioners and staff. Here's a brochure of why we're here. Open it up, you can kind of see a southern map of Minnesota here.
How are you?
So at the bottom is a, kind of a geographic outline. Again, now that I'm at the mic, Doug Hughes representing Steel Wasika Co-op Electric. And this lower portion represents twelve cooperatives. And for several years, Alliant Energy has wished to move out of Minnesota, and an agreement has be, become available between twelve different cooperatives that Alliant has territory, kind of fingering through everybody's service territory in southern Minnesota. And Alliant's service area in Minnesota is only roughly four percent of Alliant's total operation, so it's a fairly small portion. So for operational purposes, it's, makes a lot of sense to see if local people might serve the public better. And of course, this has to go through the PUC, and to do that, you kind of need some letter of support that you're good neighbors and you are a good public citizen. And in this particular case, there's no Rice County citizens that are affected by this transition from Alliant to the cooperatives, but since we've been an active participant in Rice County since nineteen thirty-six and very active since nineteen eighty-eight, since the industrial area kind of boom north of the freeway here, we understand politically that Rice County cannot necessarily support the sale or no sale of the Alliant territory, but we're here as a good neighbor in request that Rice County might just put in a good word for us as people that they can work with and move their county forward and support the cooperative as a good citizen and neighbor. So politically, we can stay out of that area, but we do have letters of support of attaboys from several other organizations in the same position. So that's what we're requesting today is a good neighbor letter in support to our board from the county of, or Rice County.
I will make a motion to approve the writing of a letter of support.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Malika and a second by Bauer to approve the letter of support. Questions, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Who, who has plans to write this letter, and will we maybe see a copy before we send it out?
I, I'm certainly happy to, to prepare the draft for the chair's signature. I'm not sure what your timeframe is, what your dead, I know you have deadlines on.
We have, we have till February second to receive letters coming in.
Would you like to review the draft next Tuesday or have it in your box next Tuesday, and then?
Is that timely enough? Isn't that the second?
Tell me, oh, that is the second.
It is the second.
You can send out a copy by email.
I can CC you.
I can CC you, too. If I look around, there is.
Probably won't have an opportunity, though, to get together to review it in advance.
Well, we, we'd have the opportunity to comment if we thought it was, so if you wanted to just copy us on it, would that be good?
Okay.
In, in comparison, it can be relatively brief, you know, not too complicated.
Okay. All right. Steve?
I thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I see that the Alliant employees will become employees of Steel Wasika, and no one's going to be laid off, and.
That, that's correct. And in our particular service area, we gain only one line, in line person, individual, and he's accepted a position whenever the transition occurs.
Go ahead, Gillen.
And, and you have been good neighbors to work with, and we, we certainly appreciate the relationship that we as Rice County have with Steel Wasika. It's been a good one, and we hope to continue that in the future and work with you, and yeah, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree. So we have a motion by Malika, second by Bauer, for Tony Murphy to write a letter of support, and that he's going to send it out to us. I would ask that if anybody has any questions or changes, please respond within twenty-four hours, otherwise it's going to go out, as written. So we have that, that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony and staff.
All right, we're going to move back into environmental services with Julia Runkel.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first item I have for you is an item from the Planning Commission, and this is a request from Raw Construction LLC for conditional use permit for contractors' office and yard in section eleven of Wells Township. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with ten conditions.
So move for approval.
Second.
All right, wait. We have a motion by Bauer, second by Mal, Malika. Any questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
The second item I have for you is a, is sort of what we're proposing as a board-initiated zoning ordinance amendment and rezone. We were directed, based on some requests that we've been receiving, to look at some areas of change related to our highway commercial district, and particularly that area just north of the city of Fairbo, which is less than a mile, it's about a half a mile outside of the city of, of Fairbo. It's a hundred and fifty-five acres, roughly. This is currently zoned highway commercial. One of the things was to look at potential warehousing and, and/or manufacturing uses and, and trying to provide more opportunities for that in this area. As you recall, this area is slated at some point to have public utilities and services when it's economically feasible to service that area. At this time, they're not asking for that necessarily, but we do want to provide some orderly transition to that. So at this point, what we are proposing for the board's consideration is to actually rezone this area to new district, which we, for lack of a better description, we called it the Urban Reserve Industrial District, and this proposed ordinance change, it would allow some limited industrial uses that are not water-intensive, not compatible until it is determined that it can be economically and financially feasible to extend those services through an orderly transition. So I'll just walk you through some of the proposals, proposed language here, not word for word, but at least give you some descriptions here. You should have the latest version, which is at, you'll see at the bottom or the top of each, each chapter, one, twenty-six, fifteen, and that should have been with me today. Chapter five eighteen is actually the, the brand-new district that we're, we're talking about here. This would, so this is all basically new language, but it is worked off of our highway commercial district as, as well as our limited industrial district, and combining some city of Fairbo language, as well as some other county ordinances throughout the area that may work for this area. With that, we proposed the dimensional standards and then your, your general information that we've done with the others. And then, if you have questions as we go through this or at the end, you can go ahead and ask those, and we can get into more detail if you'd like. Chapter five oh eight is the actual zoning districts and the uses, so we're proposing those, a lot of the same type of highway commercial uses, as well as adding. You'll see on eight point five is where we add the limited industrial permitted, the limited industrial conditional, and then we do the same with the warehousing, kind of split that up, and I can talk about those triggers in a second. So chapter five oh seven is actually our specific development standards, and that, starting on seven point one-two, is where you will see the, the new language that we're proposing. Basically, there'd be three triggers, taking, allowing this mani, in limited industrial or manufacturing uses, describing what those definitions of those uses could be, and these uses did come from the city of Fairbo's ordinance for the most part. With that, what our, our three triggers would be, would be if the square footage exceeded a hundred thousand square feet, it would trigger it into a conditional use permit. If sewage discharge was over five thousand gallons per day, it would trigger it into a conditional use permit, and that's because you get into the mid-sized systems, bigger well, wells and that type of thing, and/or if there was some type of environmental review that was required. That way, if the environmental review showed something, you could attach conditions to those permits. But otherwise, it would be a permitted use. A site plan would be required, they'd be required to meet the standards of the ordinance. There's some limitation on how much accessory storage they could have that, so that it doesn't exceed the primary use on the site. And then, again, if it, if one of those triggers came into play, then it would be a conditional use. And the same change is proposed on seven point one-five with the warehousing, basically, that there'd be some permitted, they would come in for the site plan, the building permit and those type of things, and they would, could be approved as long as they met the standards of the ordinance, and then those same triggers for the conditional uses. Chapter five oh five, our general regulations, we just needed to do some changes because URI, the Urban Reserve Industrial District, would not be listed, so we added URI wherever there was references to the highway commercial, commercial, village mixed use and limited industrial. So those are the main changes. There were a couple other changes with some of the required parking spaces, because when we really looked at warehousing and what it would actually entail, we looked at some current examples, and it was requiring an awful lot of parking for what really needs to be there. So we did propose some changes to that as well. And then, chapter five oh six was just a slight change where we needed to also include the URI, URI district for the impervious surface limitation and increasing that to, it's actually allowed up to seventy-five percent rather than the twenty-five percent that is typical for residential or shoreland, those type of uses. With that, are there any questions about the particular language or, or concept, I guess?
Commissioners, any questions?
So you, you need a, oh, that's the next one. You, oh, this, and we'll go on. So you need a, a date, do you need a date to set the public hearing?
Yeah, well, yes. If, if you are comfortable with this language and with this proposal, what we would request is that the Planning Commission set up, you set a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and actually, we did ask them, and February nineteenth would work. That's a Thursday night, seven o'clock.
Okay. So February nineteenth at seven? And that would be here, I presume?
Correct. It'd be typical.
All right.
Funding commission.
So I will make a motion to set the public hearing for zoning ordinance amendment and rezoning for February nineteenth at seven PM.
Second. We have a motion by Malika, second by Bauer. Any discussion of the motions? Any questions? If not, we'll vote. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That motion carries.
Good, thank you.
Set for February nineteenth at seven PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion by Malika, second by Dawkins to adjourn. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Are adjourned. Thank you. And do you want to move right?
Yeah.
Into the, yeah, we'll move into, move into the.
Exhausted after a half hour, but we'll, we'll power through.
Yeah.
After your nap, yeah, let's move on to the next meeting.
We'll move into the Regional Railroad Authority Annual Meeting for Rice County. Call to order, or? Okay, go ahead, Meredith.
If you would like to call the meeting to order.
I would.
Okay. Your function today at your annual meeting is to approve the bylaws. You did not do that at the time that you issued the resolution organizing the Regional Railroad Authority, so that is a step you need to take today. In addition, the bylaws provide that you identify officers for the authority, and you would want to do that as well.
How many officers or what? The, you have a chair, vice chair, and then the county administrator under the bylaws
or under the. or under the, yeah, under the bylaws is automatically appointed the secretary treasurer.
Okay. So I will make a motion, and, and I think we should just follow suit like we do with the HRA, that the current board chair be the chair of the Railroad, Regional Railroad Authority, and the vice chair of, be our, the vice chair of our board. So that would be, chair would be Dave Miller, and vice chair would be Jeff Dacken. And do we have to, it's automatic, we don't have to vote Tony in as the secretary treasurer?
Right, that's all, and once you approve the bylaws.
Okay.
Then that would be automatic.
Oof, you don't have to make a hard campaign, Tony.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Want a second?
Yeah. We have a motion by Maka to approve myself as chair. Vice chair would be Jeff Dacken. We have a second by Bauer. Any discussion of the motion? Any challenges? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Next, moving on to the bylaws.
I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws for the Rice County Regional Rail Authority.
Second. We have a motion by Maka, second by Dacken, to approve the bylaws for the Rice County Regional Railroad Authority. Any questions? Comments? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
The only additional item that I would let you know is you are duly incorporated and have this fabulous little sign to confirm that with the Secretary of State's seal on it, so I'll give that to Shelley, and she can frame it and put it in your office.
Awesome.
Right.
And it's my understanding that there is no business to conduct, so you just need to have this meeting again a year from now.
All right, thank you, Meredith.
And less business comes before us.
Exactly.
All right.
Right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion by Maka, second by Dacken, to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.